Buenas tardes a todos. Encantada de ver a tantos de ustedes. Feliz día tras día del trabajo. Quiero comenzar este comité y dejar que todos sepan que este es un comité especial de la Comisión de Salud, Energía y Derechos de Trabajadores de la Hacienda. Hoy estamos teniendo una sesión de almuerzo y aprendizaje, o sesión de trabajo, si están familiarizados con el lingo Olympia. Nosotros le llamamos así una sesión de trabajo. Hablando sobre la nueva economía y el trabajo. Solo para aclarar, este no es una sesión de trabajo específica relacionada con los drivers de TNC. Esto es sobre la economía gigante en su conjunto. Así que vamos a mirar ampliamente la labor de la economía gigante, el cambio de entorno de trabajo, y quiero empezar diciendo gracias a todos los trabajadores. Gracias a todas nuestras uniones de trabajo, los trabajadores de la organización, trabajadores en cada sector. Ayer fue Día del Trabajo y nos honramos por su trabajo, no solo reconociéndolo en Día del Trabajo, sino también haciendo el trabajo que tratamos de hacer aquí en el comité, que es expandir y proteger los estándares de trabajo en cada sector, y mirar las nuevas y emergentes economías, e intentar descubrir cómo podemos continuar expandiendo las protecciones de trabajo en entornos de trabajo no tradicionales. Eso es lo que se trata en términos de la elaboración de políticas públicas. Y solo quiero tomar un segundo para reconocer que ayer fue Día del Trabajo y honrar el trabajo de todos los trabajadores. Así que vamos a darle por vencido a todos los trabajadores internacionalmente. De nuevo, son 12:02 y el comité especial en la Comisión de Salud, Energía y Derechos de Trabajadores vendrá a ordenar, y soy Teresa Moscada, presidenta del comité. Antes de empezar con algunas introducciones, me encantaría tener a algunas personas que van a estar con nosotros venir a la mesa aquí para que podamos comenzar nuestra discusión en comité de forma rápida. Mariah Mitchell, con Caviar, Postmates y otros servicios basados en aplicaciones. Dawn Creary, con la Asociación de Driveres Basadas en Aplicaciones. Rebecca Smith, vengan, directora de estructuras de trabajo de la Proyecto National de Ley de Empleo. Mia Kelly, de Instacart. Aya Nguyen, desaproveché si dije eso equivocado, de la líder del proyecto de iniciativa de futuro. Data y Iniciativa de Investigación de la Sociedad. Miss Nguyen, gracias por venir. Y luego Ulysses Galvez, de Instacart y Postmates. Así que bienvenidos a todos. Muchas gracias por acompañarnos. El miembro del consejo, Herbald, es el presidente de Crueda, que también tiene desarrollo económico dentro de él y ha hecho un montón de trabajo en las protecciones de los puestos de trabajo, especialmente en la economía gigante. Gracias por estar aquí. Michael Bryan, gracias por estar aquí, una advocate de larga edad para los estándares de trabajo también, y ha realmente puesto en juego el tema de los salarios y el sector de servicios humanos en nuestro radar, que estamos contentos de poder trabajar en este año. Gracias por acompañarnos. Los amigos de la mesa, puede que haya más gente que nos acompañe de nuestros colegas del consejo. Y también tenemos a los amigos en la tele que están siendo proyectados en la pantalla. Y también tendremos la oportunidad de que todos se presenten aquí en un minuto. Así que queríamos tomar un segundo para tener una conversación sobre la economía gigante, especialmente vinculándola con Día del Trabajo y reconociendo la estructura cambiante del entorno de trabajo y la necesidad de que nosotros miramos cómo las economías están cambiando y específicamente discutir la labor gigante. Tendremos un comentario público al final de este comité, y sabemos que hay mucho por hablar en este ámbito, y muchos de los temas que esperamos abarcar, creo, para un futuro trabajo en el consejo. Nada en específico que se vaya a hacer más tarde este otoño, porque tenemos un presupuesto que viene en unos cuatro o cinco semanas, que va a consumir a todos nosotros. Pero sé que hay muchos temas en la lista de cosas a hacer que muchos trabajadores y defensores de los trabajadores han estado pidiendo durante mucho tiempo. Así que esto nos dará la oportunidad de mirar cambios en las políticas, mirar los estándares de trabajo, especialmente en la economía gigante, y cómo la economía gigante y su ascenso en la área de Seattle y en toda la nación han sido complejos. Pero tenemos expertos, expertos con los que hemos tenido la oportunidad de trabajar en el pasado cuando estaba en el Consejo de Trabajo de Washington, AFL-CIO, y expertos en el terreno en términos de los trabajadores mismos, para pensar cómo podemos levantar algunos de estos estándares de trabajo. Vamos a mirar varias perspectivas de políticas en el futuro y vamos a mirar atraer más gente a esta discusión, incluyendo de la industria, mientras hablamos de políticas en el futuro. Así que sin más adelante, Faride, ¿por qué no leemos oficialmente el item número uno en la agenda? Y luego vamos a tener a los amigos presentes. Oups, creo que... Ahí está el micrófono.
Perdón por eso. Item número uno, una discusión en el panel con expertos académicos y trabajadores de la economía gigante para una breve discusión.
Excelente. Así que ¿por qué no vamos adelante y vamos alrededor de la mesa y solo hacéis decir vuestro nombre y su organización o quién representan? Y luego empezaremos con la presentación oficial en un poco aquí. Pero solo para que podamos decir oficialmente quién está en la mesa, vamos a empezar aquí.
Dawn Creary, estoy con la Asociación de Driveres Basadas en Aplicaciones, afiliada con Teamsters 117.
Excelente, gracias.
Hola, soy Rebecca Smith de la Proyecto Nacional de Ley de Empleo.
Excelente.
Ida Cuevas, del consejo de Moscadas.
Hola, mi nombre es Mia Kelly y estoy con la campaña de Pay Up y trabajo para Instacart.
Hola, mi nombre es Ulysses Galvez, trabajador de Instacart y Postmates.
Y el miembro del consejo, O'Brien, ¿por qué no te presentas también?
Miembro del consejo, O'Brien.
Soy Mariah Mitchell y trabajo para Uber Eats, Caviar, Postmates y Lyft.
Excelente. Y miembro del consejo, Herbald.
Miembro del consejo, Lisa Herbald, representando West Seattle y South Park, Distrito 1.
Excelente. Y tenemos una persona con nosotros por Skype. Oh, no puedo escucharlos.
No podemos escucharte.
Vamos a ver si estás en mute.
¿Me escuchas ahora?
Sí, podemos.
Bien. Soy Aya Nguyen, soy la líder del proyecto de la iniciativa de futuros de trabajo en el Instituto de Investigación de la Sociedad y la Data.
Excelente. Y gracias por acompañarnos a través de Skype. Y también sabemos que tenemos una presentación en Power Point, así que probablemente estemos desplazándonos entre pantallas. Pero estamos muy emocionados de tenerte. Así que muchas gracias a todos de nuevo por acompañarnos. Vamos a empezar con nuestros trabajadores. Los amigos que están aquí en la mesa, les estamos pidiendo que compartan un poco sobre ellos mismos, cuál ha sido su interacción con la economía gigante y el tipo de trabajo que hacen, y cuánto tiempo han estado haciéndolo, y por qué comenzaron a embarcar en esta labor en la economía gigante. Y luego después de eso, nos dirigiremos a algunos de nuestros expertos de temas, nuestros expertos académicos y de investigación, para hablar un poco más sobre qué es la economía gigante y la prevalencia de los trabajadores en la economía gigante. Así que si quieren comenzarnos, eso sería genial.
Dawn Creary, he sido conductor de Uber y Lyft durante cinco años y medio. Antes de eso, hice trabajos desordenados. Fui actor, músico, portero de escena. La recesión de 2008 realmente puso mucho trabajo, hizo difícil vivir confortablemente. Y así, como muchas personas en ese momento, Uber y Lyft vinieron y lo revisé. Y diría que durante un año fue bastante bien. Y luego comenzaron las reducciones de los tasos. Y aquí estamos hoy.
¿Comenzaron las reducciones de los tasos?
Sí, comenzaron.
¿Hay algo más que quisieras compartir sobre por qué decidiste entrar en esa área?
Estaba buscando otra línea de trabajo. Como dije, con la recesión de 2008, muchas cosas que la clase de trabajo hizo fueron... Desaparecieron. Quiero decir, la mayoría de lo que hice, enseñé clases de guitarra por un tiempo. Fui parte de mi vida haciendo eso. Y ese tipo de trabajo fue eliminado en 2008. Así que tuve que empezar a llenar los huecos ahí. Y inicialmente, Uber y Lyft llenaron bastante bien, durante un año.
Excelente, gracias. ¿Alguien más quiere compartir su perspectiva de trabajo?
Mi nombre es Mia. El año pasado, básicamente hacía croques de matrimonio. Y entre los croques de matrimonio, fui capaz de suplir mi ingreso a través de Instacart. Algunas semanas, o en realidad más, cuatro semanas después, me lesioné en el trabajo. Y pensando que me protegerían Washington State, descubrí que no lo era. Descubrí que no me daban los mismos derechos que alguien que estaba firmando una W-2 versus a alguien que estaba firmando una 1099. Descubrí que este trabajo era genial para aquellos de nosotros que tienen enfermedades ocultas, aquellos de nosotros que tienen enfermedades crónicas que no compartimos con el resto del público. Quiero decir, después de todo, ¿qué tipo de trabajo permitiría que fuera libre por semanas seguidas o incluso rápidamente en ese mismo día? Así que sentí que trabajar para Instacart y además tener mi propio pequeño negocio de crocas de matrimonio, eso fue la forma de ir. Desafortunadamente, había, como dijo antes, hubo una cambio de salario. Y básicamente, mi salario fue... Fue básicamente baja dos tercios. Así que aún así, se espera que hagas el mismo tipo de trabajo pero solo un tercio del salario. Y esta es una de las razones por las que entré en esto.
Me gustaría construir sobre lo que dijo cuando se trata de tener algunas enfermedades ocultas. Mi nombre es Ulysses Galvez. Fui un corresponsal de exército en el marino corporal. Hice varios bombones de combate para este país en Afganistán, Irak y en África. Hice 20 años de servicio para mi país. Y volví con mi cuerpo, pero, por supuesto, mi mente y mi alma han sido romidas. Y así luché con lo que está hablando. No puedo mantener un trabajo regular debido a las cosas que vi y las cosas que hice para mi país, lo cual está bien. Es lo que pasó. Eso es guerra. Y estoy bien con eso. Pero lo que no estoy bien con es que cuando empecé este trabajo, casi fue un Dios mandado, porque me permitió, cuando estaba teniendo un buen día, o teniendo un buen día, poder ir a trabajar y ser un miembro productivo de la sociedad y tener contacto humano con personas que, ya sabes, especialmente con Instacart. Tengo a varias personas mayores que tienen demencia y otros problemas médicos que no pueden llegar al supermercado. Y así me permitió tener contacto humano con ellos que ellos aprecian y yo aprecio. Y, ya sabes, me sentaría y hablaba con ellos a veces. Me preguntaban sobre mi servicio. Quiero decir, era una conexión humana que muchos trabajos no te permiten hacer. Pero lo principal es como dijo ella, que fui capaz de seguir siempre que pudiese. También hago mucho, bueno, solía hacer mucho servicio de voluntariado con Stand Up for Kids. Trabajamos con las niñas sin hogar. Pero desde que hicieron la reducción del salario, no he podido involucrarme en ese tipo de servicio de comunidad más aún, porque ahora tengo que trabajar 12 a 14 horas solo para aportar el mismo cantidad que estaba aportando cuando empecé con la compañía. Prettyamente vivo fuera de mi automóvil ahora porque tengo que situarme estratégicamente en áreas donde va a haber muchas ordenes en lugar de ir a casa, porque simplemente la distancia me está matando con 330... Sabes, el gas es, ¿qué?, ¿330 un galón? Y sube aquí y allá. Y eso afecta, ya sabes, eso afecta... La cantidad que tengo que pagar. Y así lo que estoy llegando a, lo que estoy tratando de decir es que hay algunas cosas positivas sobre este tipo de trabajo para personas como nosotros. Pero últimamente se ha vuelto negativo porque ha causado casi una ansiedad de ingreso. Y es algo que para mí es depresivo para mi salud mental, porque con la ansiedad viene el estrés. ¿Y qué hace eso conmigo? Bueno, a la noche, cuando todo el mundo duerme, empiezo a tener mis dolores de noche de nuevo y empiezo a revivir las cosas que vi y las cosas que hice porque estoy estresado por, oh, Dios mío, tengo que mirar mi teléfono, ver si hay una orden. En la mañana, me levanto, lo primero que hago es mirar mi teléfono y busco una orden y veo si va a haber una orden que pueda... Tal vez sea una orden de $40 o una orden de $50, espero. Y así estoy vinculado a mi teléfono, no estoy viendo Facebook o no estoy jugando, jugando un videojuego o algo así. Estoy mirando mi teléfono para las órdenes. Así que incluso mi calidad de vida ha sido gravemente sufrida porque estoy sentado allí como un loco en mi teléfono. Incluso cuando voy a cenar con mi familia, estoy como, oh, Dios mío, es una buena orden, tengo que ir. Y es... Y es... Y ha afectado mi trabajo de comunidad, ha afectado a mi familia. Y mucha gente me dice, bueno, ¿por qué no voy a buscar otro trabajo? Bueno, porque serví y lo hago. Ningún trabajo me permitirá llamar y decir, hey, he tenido una mala noche la noche pasada, no puedo ir a trabajar. Así que no puedo trabajar en una oficina, no puedo hacer un trabajo de 9 a 5 porque de lo que habló ella, lo que estoy pasando o lo que estoy haciendo, y es algo vital que tengo que lidiar con el resto de mi vida. Así que sí, eso es.
Eso es muy útil. Gracias por compartir eso. Y sé que has montado un video también, que creo que mostraremos después de que escuches a ti Mia y...
María.
Lo siento, María. Y luego veremos ese video y luego escucharemos a algunos de los expertos académicos en el campo. Y luego lo abriremos para algunas preguntas. Sé que tengo algunas, y estoy seguro de que los colegas del consejo tienen algunas también. Así que esto es muy útil para el establecimiento de base para nosotros cuando entendemos cuál ha sido la experiencia de trabajo individual y lo que has visto de tus colegas en el sector y cómo la economía cambiante ha afectado tanto la línea de trabajo que haces como la experiencia emocional que acaba de describir. Vamos adelante.
Así que solo quería decir que la razón por la que empecé haciendo los trabajos de la economía gigante, gradué en la Universidad de Washington en 2005. Tengo dos bachelors. Interné en la ciudadanía. Aplicé a todas las escuelas de derecho. No obtuve la oportunidad de ir a la escuela de derecho y soy una madre sola. Así que necesitaba un trabajo. Tengo que cuidar a mis hijos, tengo que alimentarlos. Y esto fue perfecto para mí. Y al principio, Uber estaba pagando mucho dinero. Así que fue genial, estaba funcionando. Fui capaz de llevar a mis hijos a la escuela. No fui capaz de trabajar un 9 a 5 tradicional porque tendría que dejar de trabajar para dejar de mis hijos, recoger a mis hijos. Y no podía encontrar un empleador flexible lo suficientemente flexible para mis horarios de niños. Así que empecé a hacer esto entre el tiempo mientras estaban en la escuela. Y he estado haciendo esto durante unos tres años, Postmates, Uber y Caviar. Y desde entonces, han estado reduciendo el salario. Así que... Y mi automóvil se rompió debido a la usanza y la rotura. Así que con la registración, los tarjetas, la seguros, estaba... Estaba pagando más que estaba haciendo. Así que empecé a hacer Lyft. Y nos dan automóviles a través de Hertz. Y básicamente, hago Lyft para pagar los vehículos para que pueda mantener un vehículo. Hago Uber para pagar el dinero para que pueda comprar comida a mis hijos. Hago Caviar para que pueda comprar ropa escolar. Y hago Postmates para comprar suministros escolares y gas y las otras cosas que necesitan ser pagadas. Y estoy encontrando que estoy trabajando más horas que si estuviera en un 9 a 5 tradicional porque me levanto a las 4:30 para hacer las órdenes de Starbucks, IHOP y Denny's. Y luego me cambio a Lyft para darle a la gente boles de trabajo. Y luego me cambio a Postmates, cuando dejo a mis hijos en la escuela, me cambio a Postmates, hago Postmates y Caviar para la carrera de almuerzo de 11 a 2, voy a la escuela para recoger a mis hijos de Lowell Elementary, Meaney Middle School, Garfield High School. Y luego vuelvo y hago Caviar para hacer la carrera de almuerzo de 5 a 9, encuentro algo en medio de ahí para alimentar a mis hijos. Y finalmente, duermo alrededor de las 10 y comienzo de nuevo el siguiente día.
Todos los días.
Y se ha tomado todo.
Gracias a todos por compartir esas historias para que podamos tener un fundamento de cómo este trabajo ha afectado tanto a los trabajadores como al tipo de industrias de las que estamos hablando. Estoy segura de que mucha gente en la audiencia y tal vez aquí en el consejo ha tenido interacciones con la economía basada en aplicaciones, ya sea DoorDash, Instacart, Grubhub, tomando Lyft o Uber. Interactuamos con estas servicios, pero tener la oportunidad de profundizar en cómo esto ha afectado el trabajo y el entorno de trabajo es realmente el punto de este almuerzo y aprendizaje de hoy. Me encantaría si pudieramos ir a la slaj 3 y mostrar el video para justamente redondear esta discusión sobre el fundamento. Y este es el video que entendemos, que ha sido compartido por Ulysses. Y trataré de cambiar las luces aquí para que más gente pueda ver. Y luego, Faride, ¿tenemos audio para esto? Si podemos volver al principio también. Joseph, ¿estás capaz de ayudarnos?
Está bien, permítame llenar los huecos.
Sí, eso sería genial.
Así que lo que estás viendo es una orden típica para Postmates. Así que ves el... Hay un timer de reloj. Tienes unos 30 segundos para aceptar esta orden. Así que si miras este pequeño círculo, verás un pequeño círculo... Si retrocedes. Está bien, ¿ves el círculo? Se está contando. Tienes... Es un círculo de 30 segundos en el que tienes que decidir si vas a tomar ese trabajo o no. Y debido a la falta de transparencia, no nos están diciendo como es la distancia. Así que lo que algunos de nosotros hacemos, es lo que está haciendo él, es ir a Google Maps y ver qué es la distancia. ¿Cuánto es eso? ¿Cuánto es la distancia al orden? ¿Cuánto es al cliente, correcto? Y luego dices, está bien, es... Y otros factores que no se hablan realmente, pero el tráfico también, ¿correcto? Así que voy a gastar 30 minutos en el tráfico, o 15, o lo que sea, para llegar a esa orden. Así que todos pensamos en el tiempo. Así que tienes 30 segundos para contemplar, ¿esta orden vale la pena? Y como puedes ver, ¿ves un precio en algún lugar? No hay como lo que nos van a pagar. Todo está en el aire. Como si estuvieras esperando que te pague lo suficiente para que justifiques tu tomación de ese trabajo. Donde antes, antes del cambio, solían darte una estimación. Como este trabajo va a pagar $20 o $15. Así que puedes decir, está bien, con la distancia y eso, está bien, eso vale la pena. Pero ahora... Quiero decir, ¿harías un trabajo así? ¿Sabes? Voy a tomar ese trabajo y no sabes qué es y tienes que ir 10 millas. Y eso es en el tráfico también.
Sí, el tiempo de día realmente importa.
Correcto. Y así cuando sumas la distancia, ni siquiera tu tiempo, la distancia y todo lo demás, al final de la slaj, verás que fue como, el salario de casa fue como $2. Eso es el salario mínimo.
Gracias por mostrarnos ese lado de la aplicación, que sé que mucha gente que usa estas aplicaciones no ve.
Correcto, no la ves. Y sabes, la mayoría de los clientes con los que hablo y les dejo saber de esto, ya sabes, porque te sientes a la gente, ¿correcto? Y eso es mucho de mi formación en el ejército, ¿correcto? Puedo ver cuando alguien va a reaccionar conmigo y tal vez tenga una empatía por mí, ¿correcto? Alguien me da mi comida y sale de aquí. Eso es, ya sabes, no hablas con esas personas. Pero todos los clientes que generan interés, me dicen que es broma. Son como, ¿por qué lo estás haciendo? ¿Sabes? Oh, Dios mío. ¿Sabes? ¿Cómo podemos ayudarte?
Eso es...
Son muy... Son muy perceptivos, no perceptivos, pero muy empáticos con nuestra necesidad. Y así no es decir, bueno, los clientes no están dispuestos a pagar más. Sé que están dispuestos a pagar más porque he hablado con ellos. El 90% de los clientes con los que hablé, son como, sí, te pagaré más, te pagaré un salario de vida.
Así que Becky Smith, con esa pregunta en mente, desde la perspectiva del cliente de querer, por supuesto, poder acceder a algunos de estos servicios, pero sabiendo que algunos de los trabajadores están en esta situación, y la pregunta es, ¿cómo podemos ayudar? ¿Puedes darnos una mejor perspectiva de cuántos trabajadores estamos hablando en esta industria? Sé que tienes algunas slides en adición a tu colega que está en Skype con nosotros. Pero si ambos podrían ayudarnos a pasaros los siguientes slides aquí y realmente darnos una mejor comprensión de la economía gigante, cuántos trabajadores están en ella y qué tendencias estás viendo, para que podamos entender el alcance del tema mientras transmitimos estas historias con los datos.
Claro. En realidad podríamos empezar con Aya. Creo que sus slides son más de este tamaño y puedo hablar un poco sobre las tendencias.
Claro. ¿Eso tiene sentido, Aya? Estoy mirando la pantalla. ¿Escucha a nosotros?
Sí, puedo ir adelante y hablar un poco sobre la gestión de algoritmos.
Genial. Y mientras hablas, podemos escucharte fuerte y claro. ¿Quieres que nos muestre ciertas slides mientras hablas?
No, creo que está bien. Solo hay una slide y creo que es la última, pero creo que quizá es mejor que yo la explique.
Está bien, genial. Llegaremos a ti entonces, podemos verte ahora.
Sí, así que solo para dar un poco de fondo, Data y la Sociedad estudia las implicancias de las tecnologías de data centrales en el trabajo. Y en este contexto, se refiere a estos tipos de sistemas como gestión de algoritmos. El punto es que se usan para manejar los trabajos y ha sido especialmente útil para manejar los trabajos que están dispersos, ¿correcto? No en un lugar central, pero también se está adoptando en lugares de trabajo tradicionales también. Y hay variados grados de complejidad, pero lo que estás viendo es una prolífica recolección de datos y la vigilancia de los trabajadores a través de la tecnología, como sistemas GPS y los trabajadores inyectando y bajando. Y usan ese dato para tener una responsividad en tiempo real para informar las decisiones de gestión. Así que esto es lo que permite que compañías de servicio de salud digan que hay una inundación que está sucediendo en esta área porque saben que todos estos clientes quieren boles. Y así son capaces de usar ese dato para empujar a los drivers a un espacio en particular para recoger esos boles. Y en ese sentido, es automatizar o semi-automatizar la toma de decisiones para personas que normalmente lo harían ellos mismos, que son los drivers que normalmente dirían si tuvieran toda la información, este es un boleto que tomaré o este es un boleto que no tomaré. Pero tener toda esa información en las manos de la empresa crea una asimetría de información. Por eso hace difícil para los trabajadores decidir, ya sabes, realmente no quiero tomar este boleto porque me va a llevar a un lugar muy remoto y luego tendré que pagar por el regreso. Y así, lo que pasa es que las empresas luego crean nudos y penaltis para incentivar indirectamente a los trabajadores a comportarse de una manera particular. Y estos son los cuatro elementos clave que estamos pensando ahora mismo cuando estamos escuchando lo que la gente está hablando. El último es como, esto es donde empezamos a entrar en esta conversación sobre los clientes, es el transferir mucho de la performance a los clientes. Son los que califican la performance. Y esa es otra forma de control a través de evaluaciones de rendimiento y un gaming de trabajo.
Muchas gracias. Becky, ¿quieres empezar con algunos de los otros datos también?
Claro, claro. Así que la gente habla de la economía gigante de diferentes formas. Y sabes, verás algunos informes que dicen que 20 o 30 o 50% de nosotros trabajamos en la economía gigante. Y eso realmente depende de cómo piensas de la economía gigante. Sabes, en un estudio, debido a que recibí un honorario por algo que escribí hace un mes yo sería considerado en la economía gigante. Tengo un trabajo de tiempo completo, no lo soy. Pero es... Hay un tipo de universo de personas que están trabajando de diferentes formas que un trabajo de W-2 completo, incluyendo a los que trabajan para agencias de personalización o a los que están en contacto o para empresas de contratos. Y luego los contratistas independientes. Y los contratistas independientes son alrededor del 10% de los trabajadores en este país. Y normalmente la gente sitúa el trabajo basado en aplicaciones dentro de eso. No todos los trabajos basados en aplicaciones son contratistas independientes. Hay algunas empresas que tratan a los trabajadores como empleados, pero normalmente los mayores son en ese concepto de contratista independiente. En todo el país, la mejor data es que es alrededor del 1% de la población. Así que no es un gran número de personas hasta ahora, pero está creciendo y creciendo aquí en Washington State. Un estudio que fue justamente comisionado por la legislatura encontró que ha crecido alrededor del 15% durante un periodo, creo, de cuatro años. Así que muy pequeño, pero creciendo. Y creo que una gran influencia en general porque muchas de las empresas, muy francamente, tratan a los trabajadores como contratistas independientes y no pagan impuestos de salario y no se sienten obligados a pagar el salario mínimo o cosas así.
Interesante, pensamos en los bicicletas eléctricas y los scooter eléctricos como basados en aplicaciones. Pero una de las cosas que acabamos de aprender, creo que nuestros colegas de Chicago, es que cuando lanzaron su política scooter, requerían que los trabajadores de esa industria sean trabajadores de W-2. Y así creo que es un buen ejemplo de donde tienes una línea de empleo basada en aplicaciones, pero es absolutamente empleo. No es una situación de contratista independiente. ¿Es eso un buen ejemplo de donde tu trabajo puede ser dictado por una aplicación, pero todavía estás clasificado como un trabajador, un empleado?
Claro. Y hay un número de empresas que hacen eso. Ofrecen la flexibilidad que los trabajadores han hablado de realmente querer, pero también cumplen con los estándares de trabajo básicos.
Así que tenemos algunas slides y estoy preguntando si Mia, podríamos empezar contigo si miramos la slaj 4. Tenemos un ejemplo de una pantalla de resumen de la factura de Instacart. Oh, sí, adelante.
¿Puedo solo agregar algo muy rápido sobre lo que acabas de decir? Lo que he notado, especialmente en Instacart, es que nos dicen que somos contratistas. Pero aún así, si somos verdaderamente contratistas, si me llega un trabajo, debería ser capaz de rechazarlo porque soy un contratista. Pero en lugar de eso, me penalizan. ¿Correcto? Porque si me mantienes, si me dan una orden de $5 y dices, no, no voy a tomar eso por $5, ¿estás loco? No voy a ir 10 millas por $5. Entonces, por tres minutos tienes que esperar. Y luego te envían de nuevo. Tienes que esperar otros tres minutos y luego declinarlo. Entonces, si te envían otro que es bajo y dices no, entonces te tiran del sistema.
Y te dan un incidente de confianza.
Y te dan un incidente de confianza. Pero dicen que somos contratistas. Si soy verdaderamente un contratista, y he hablado con el servicio de clientes sobre esto, si soy verdaderamente un contratista, debería ser capaz de decir, no, no voy a hacer ese trabajo. Así que quieren de ambos modos. No... No... Quieren tratar a nosotros como contratistas cuando nos ajustan, pero no quieren... Pero quieren tratar a nosotros como empleados y penalizarnos cuando no tomamos trabajo.
Es una distinción realmente importante. Y tal vez antes de ir a esta slaj, teniendo la oportunidad de trabajar con Rebecca Smith de NLP durante un número de años sobre problemas de clasificación errónea, una de las cosas que sé que tú sabes dentro y fuera es la definición de dirección y control cuando miras a alguien si es verdaderamente un contratista independiente o no. ¿Te molesta compartir con los amigos en la sala y con todos los que están viendo en línea la definición de dirección y control, que es realmente algo que deberíamos mirar para definir si hay un rol de contratista independiente bonificado versus ser dicho dónde ir, qué hacer, y luego tener penaltis asociadas si no lo haces? ¿Te molesta compartir un poco de fondo en eso?
Sí. Quiero decir, la esencia de estar en el negocio por sí mismo es que tienes control sobre cosas excepto que tal vez... over things other than maybe the hours that you work. You get to decide what customers you choose, and you get to set your own standards, and you get to set your own rates. And that, that is what is being in business for yourself. So think the plumber who comes to your house, or the electrician who, at least at my house, they tell me what they're gonna charge. I don't tell them. And when you think of what Aihai was talking about too, in some ways, these companies exert more control than any W-2 employer you can think of because of the algorithms and because they keep track of workers every movement.
Very interesting. So do you mind walking us through a few examples of the Instacart screen that we're looking at here?
Sure, not a problem.
And just pull it real close if you can. There you go.
So this is what we're looking at. This screen here is what you'll get. You'll first be told where you're gonna go shop at, how many pieces you're gonna get, and is it going to be a full-service order or a delivery-only order? A full-service order is basically where you go in and shop and package up and go. Delivery-only is when you just go in, pick up the already picked-out items, and then off you go. If you take a look at it, you, like earlier was said, you only have a certain amount of time to figure out, are you gonna take this order? You have to figure out your daily expenses. With that knowledge, you then say yes or no to it, because at this point, you go ahead and say, "Okay, it's gonna be only $9.45. What time of day is it? Is it going to be an hour's worth of work? Is it going to be 15 minutes' worth of work? How long are you gonna be in traffic?" So at this rate, we already know that you're only gonna really get paid $8.46 an hour. That's, that's after everything. That's after you've paid off your gas, your car note. And if you think about it, is $8.46 worth your time?
No.
Because it's not gonna pay the rent. It's not even gonna pay the cable bill or any, even the phone bill that you use to, you know, to be on these apps. It gets worse, especially during the time of day. Everybody wants their groceries at like 4 o'clock, but we all know what Seattle's like, you know, especially on the Mercer mess. You could go two miles and be stuck in traffic for over an hour, but they calculate things as the crow flies. They do not at all put that as part of their algorithm. They don't care about that. All they know is that PCC is over here, your customer's over here, and the crow takes two minutes. But we're not crows. So, because as we all know, we have to cross a bridge just to get to anywhere. If you go onto the next slide, I think, there are a lot of these types of orders that we get. Had you'd asked me a year ago, it would have been better. The only complaint that I had was, you know, "You sent me to Capitol Hill twice, and then you sent me all the way over to Magnolia." That was my only complaint. But now, I can't even choose, I have to be very picky about what I choose. And like we said earlier, you get dinged, you get penalized if you can't afford to even do the job. So if you take a look at this hourly rate on this one, you only get $3.76. It's cheaper to stay home, or it's cheaper to wait for the next one. Don't get me wrong, we all want to work. That's the reason why a lot of us have two or three jobs. We want to work, but it, we've got all these penalizations against us. So.
Thank you. Let's, let's look at the example as well from the Uber driver perspective. Dawn, if you want to walk us through that as well, and then I'd love to turn it back over to the whole panel for your additional input, and then really open it up to council member questions before we do public comment.
Okay. This is a drive, a ride I did from downtown to Capitol Hill. And what we see here is a situation that we're seeing more and more of, in which I'm supposed to receive 80%. I didn't, I didn't even receive, well, I received just under, just slightly 2 cents over half. So I, I didn't even receive 50%. There's no explanation on this one. If it had been a conventional surge ride, I would have known ahead of time that it was a surge ride, and I would have gotten 80% of that. But there's no indication here on what, why the rider was paying this larger sum, which I didn't receive a percentage of. I think it's, there's something they call upfront pricing, which I, we are, as a driver, I'm not told what that is. I, I don't even know that it happens. I mean, I don't generally go checking each ride after I do it to see what the percentage breakdown was, but every now and then I'll go flipping through them, and I'm seeing these rides where it's like, I got 40% or 50% or 60%, and there's nothing indicating what happened there. I don't know if it's like, you know, there was, the rider was upfront told they were gonna be paying this amount, and then it's not indicated to me at all. So this is just an instance where they are, without explanation, taking much more than their 20%. Now, let's also talk about, okay, I received this $5.43. Now, you know, I spent 13 minutes on this ride, I spent a few minutes getting there, waited a few minutes afterwards for the next one, so I probably have 20, 25 minutes invested in this $5.43. However, my income tax return for this year would indicate, and I shared my income tax returns with you guys last year, so if you want to see them again this year, I'd be glad to provide that for you. But it would indicate that I make just maybe over 50% of that $5.43 after taxes and expenses. Yeah, I'll just throw out, you know, in general, I, you know, after, after expenses, I cleared $31,000, and then I paid $5,000 in taxes this last year. So that's $26,000, working full-time in a boomtown, in, you know, in an industry that supposedly is vital to the functioning of this city and is on-demand, a service which people are demanding. The market, if we, if we were truly engaged in free-market capitalism within these companies, yeah, I would be making much more than that. The, the market would demand. There's a much greater demand than what I'm, what we're being paid for any of this. The demand is much greater for what, you know, I mean, you know, these companies are engaging in, the monopolization is the goal, and predatory pricing is the means by which the monopolization is trying to be achieved. So, I mean, I, you know, we hear from time to time that, you know, the phrase "free market" being tossed out there. I mean, these companies don't engage in free-market capitalism. If they did, they'd probably go out of business. I'm not sure Uber and Lyft could compete in a true free market, where, where we were allowed as independent contractors to charge what we need to charge for doing the service.
And on the next slide, you highlighted some of the key distinctions there that I just wanted to call out for folks. I saw your hand go up, I'm sorry, did you have something to add to this?
Well, I just want to say with Uber, because I do Lyft as well, and say like an airport ride, like you said, there's no flat rate, it's supposed to be a guaranteed earning. I make between, to go to the airport, between $18 and $23, and hopefully I get a ride from the airport because I have my airport license, which you have to go through as well, and then I might make another $20. And hopefully, total, I'd make at least $50 to go to and from the airport. But with Uber, there's also, you know, Uber Eats, and with Uber Eats, it's not driving people around, it's driving their food around for $5, and you have to pay for insurance, which is over $100, tabs, registration, all this stuff, for $5 an order, it's really, and if you get a ticket on top of it, you gotta pay your tickets, and you end up paying more than you make.
I would like to add one little thing, you know, as far as like unforeseen expenses. Between the middle of January this year and March this year, I had to have my windshield repaired four times. I mean, that's, that's unusual, but I mean, I literally had it repaired, replaced one on a Monday and Tuesday morning, I got a pebble hit, and then a week and a half later, and then a month later. But I mean, and this is, these are the kind of expenses that we have, that the prices that the riders are paying don't cover it. And Uber and Lyft don't pay it, so they're not concerned with that.
If we could go to the next slide that was teed up, it was Slide number seven. And Becky and Aihai, we just wanted to put this, one more, Sigil. There we go. These are some of the pieces that you had mentioned when you did your overview on some of the trends that we're seeing. Just before we open it up to questions from other council members, and we're gonna save the last 10 minutes for public testimony, do you mind also commenting on what we've seen? What we've seen from other municipalities in terms of policymakers who've tried to address some of these trends that we've seen and some of the stories that we've heard about today?
Sure. Yeah, it seems like the policy solutions fall maybe in three basic lines. One is, you know, to, to offer workers full employee status, and if you read the newspapers, you know that that's a big debate that's happening in California right now, along with all sorts of other workers who are often called independent contractors when they're really employees. And that bill addresses not just app-based platform work, but janitors and construction workers and all sorts of other folks. The other is, I think, I mean broadly, I'd call statutory employment, that says, you know, these particular workers, no matter what the business wants to call them, are employees for purposes of this law or that, that law or this set of laws. And, you know, what you all passed as the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights last year is a good example of that. Those workers, no matter whether they're employees or independent contractors, get a certain set of rights. And then there's others that kind of make up that difference a little more broadly and just apply, say, the San Francisco minimum wage law applies to independent contractors broadly. The New York, of course, Transportation Network Company Minimum Pay Standard, again, sets minimum pay for those workers, but accepts that they're independent contractors. And then there's been some experimentation as well with Wage Board or Wage and Standards Board's ideas, and again, that was in the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights. Portland is experimenting with a standards board for drivers there. New York just passed Farm Worker Collective Bargaining, and they have a wage board to look at overtime for, for farm workers. So sort of the broad, everybody's, you're an employee if, you know, a very broad test to you're an employee because this law says you're an employee, or you get certain rights as an independent contractor, and then these other ideas about how we deliver standards to workers and involve workers at the table, somewhat like what you're doing today.
Thank you. Aihai, any other comments from you before we open it up to questions from council members?
Yeah, I had a, had a couple of comments. Definitely reiterating everything that Becky said. I wanted to make a point that, to think about, I think a couple of states have also tried to get access to data in order to bridge that information disparity that exists between what cities and, and workers and companies know. Another approach, and this is, hopefully, the, the city will think about gig work to include non-drivers, who's a very large percentage of workers who are primarily women and women of color working in domestic work, and they confront similar problems. They may not be able, they may not be paid necessarily, paid through an algorithm, but the platforms do exact fees and penalties on them as well, and that's been a challenge for some, as well as being able to stay visible on a platform when they don't actually have some of the technological savvy that others do. And, and then I think another thing that folks are trying to do is looking for greater transparency and trying to understand how decisions are made across platforms. And then lastly, looking at, looking at, I just wanted to direct folks to the second to the last slide. So in sort of understanding algorithmic management, we've tried to break down some of the challenges that workers may, may face, and one of them is surveillance and control, right? How are decisions being made, and the transparency? But then there's also instances of bias and discrimination that can creep in, particularly when consumers are the ones tapped to provide the evaluation for how well a job is done, and that could take into consideration factors that actually are, are their inherent biases and, and factors. And then lastly, accountability, and I think this definitely speaks to, you know, what Rebecca was saying, is that, is that the, these apps do allow companies to distance themselves from workers, to be able to say that they're not employers, but there are other ways that this, this distance gives other advantages as well.
Thank you all very much. I know there was a few questions. Councilmember Ryan, I thought I saw you reaching for your microphone earlier, so please feel free to ask it of anybody from these two panels.
Thank you. Dawn, I appreciate your willingness to share all the expenses and the reality that folks face, and you all have highlighted the challenges you face. You know, in a traditional economic system where companies are actually responsible, like they historically have been, when, you know, when windshield starts breaking, they would adjust their pricing scheme to accommodate that because they recognize like, "Oh, our costs are wrong." But when they're, when those costs aren't borne by the company at all, they're borne by you all at the table, they, they tend to just ignore that because it's not their cost anymore. Similarly, when they require different types of vehicles or different standards, it's not their cost. And that's the, you know, the, the breakdown of this traditional employer, employer, employee relationship that we see happening now is really disconcerting. There's, there's, you know, the, the app itself, the technology that allows us to be, you know, spontaneous and allows for flexibility is a great thing. The, the ability to shift costs and responsibilities to folks that are, are not even making minimum wage is really appalling. And it's frankly, it's a centuries-old trick in the book, and I think we often get confused because of this technology and think, "Oh, this is a new and innovative thing." Well, there's a piece of it that's new and innovative, and there's a piece of it that's as old as the employer-employee relationship, that's, they're just re-digging up and trying to mask. So I don't, sorry, Chair, I don't really have a question. I just, I wanted to make the statement that it's really, but I'd love to hear comments on that.
I would like to say that I, I believe it's a breakdown on the employer's part. So I really need the gig economy. I need the flexibility. I'm not able to find the opportunities in a traditional employee environment to get the career making 70,000 to 100,000 a year or more. So the alternative is this, and without the gig economy, there is no alternative besides being homeless and living in a tent across the street. And so there's no bathrooms, so the homeless people are going to the bathroom on the streets, and so are the gig economy people because nobody will let us use the restrooms. We're not being treated fairly by the restaurants. Essentially, in my opinion, I work for the restaurant I'm delivering for. If I do a good job, this is your customer, this person's paying your restaurant, you should treat me like one of your employees, but they don't. And so it's, it's the employer that's causing this. So I don't think it's just all on the gig economy or technology, besides the traditional employees not providing opportunities for everyone across the board.
Excellent point. One more point down here, and then Dawn.
So one of the things that I want to make sure everybody understands is that I appreciate having the job. So don't get me wrong, I don't want us to bring them down, that's not the point. I don't begrudge any of these CEOs who have these, you know, companies, I don't begrudge you your homes, I don't begrudge you your houses or your cars that you have purchased, but what I do not appreciate is that you're stealing from me. Not only are you taking food off my plate, but you're taking off of my fork and out of my mouth. You're taking it from these people's children, you're taking it from, you think that it's just a number, a part of the masses, but we're not. We're the ones who made you where you're, where you are now. And this is one of the reasons why that we are having a day of action this Thursday. So I would implore you and encourage you and invite you to come and join us at 11:00 AM over in Bellevue, at the Bellevue Downtown Park. Working Washington and the Pay Up Campaign are having a rally, and we're gonna walk across the street and give Postmates some peanuts because that's what they pay us. So, come on by.
I'd like, I'd like to add that, that she's correct. I want to work. We're not lazy. We're not expecting to get rich, and I don't have a problem with these executives making billions of dollars. That's the American way, and that's, that's fine, whatever you feel about it. But what I do expect them to do is treat us with dignity and respect and pay us a living wage. That's all I want. I'm not expecting to make 100,000, 200,000, or a million dollars. That's not what I want. What I want you to do is pay- What I want you to do is pay me an honest day's, you know, amount of money. An hour of work is an hour of work. It doesn't matter what you're doing. And if you're making billions of dollars, why can't you pay me a living wage? I don't understand that. I just don't, I don't get it. You know, in a family, if you make more money, everybody, your kids do better, they get better shoes, they get better clothes, you get a better house. And they keep, and they keep telling us, oh, you're part of the Instacart family, you're part of the Postmates family. If you're a family, if I was treating my family the way you treat us, I would be in jail for child abuse. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, come on, people. I mean, there are other veterans like myself that are doing this job, and this is a lifeline to them. And I want to be a contributing member to this society. I want to work. And I just want, you know, just pay, just pay me a living wage, that's all. I don't think I'm asking for too much. Am I?
DoorDash did admit to stealing our tips. And they bought caviar. And out of all of them, I believe caviar probably pays, it's one of the better-paying ones. And if I was to steal out of the tip jar at any place in the city, I'm going to jail, I'm at least gonna have an interview with a police officer. And I just don't see how you can admit to stealing people's tips and continue to steal our tips. And I know they're stealing my tips because I talk to the people, and they're like, I'm gonna give you a tip. And these, some of these people are trustworthy people. And then not to see it come is disheartening.
And I'd just say, add one more thing, I'm sorry.
This is why we're doing this.
I'm all fired up here, I'm getting heated here. We had a, I had a meeting with the Postmates executives, I think it was two weeks ago, with Working Washington. And I told them my story. And they told, they gave me the same platitudes that just turns my stomach. Oh, thank you for your service. And I say, you know what? If you really want to thank me, pay me a living wage. Treat me with respect. I gave for my country, and all I'm expecting for you to give me a living wage. That's it. So keep your thank you for your service. Pay me a living wage and show me that you're gonna pay me a fair amount. That's how you thank me. And that's how you thank the rest of the veterans that are doing this job.
Can I add one more thing? Also, as a customer myself, if I give you a tip, it's because that person has done a great job. I expect you to have it. I do not expect these companies using it as a base pay. I do not expect, this is my thank you to them. You're basically making me out to be a liar. But I'm the one who's, here, here's a little extra. Thank you. And you're making us look bad.
We take out their trash sometimes. I put away this elderly person's groceries into her refrigerator and throw out her old stuff because I'm a human being and I see that she's struggling. Yeah, I could just drop her groceries off at the front door and be that's it. But I go the extra mile. And I, and sometimes I'll sit, I'll sit with some of these people because they'll say, Ulysses, you and my caregiver are the only two adults that I get to interact with because I don't have any more family. And so I'll sit there and have a human connection with them. And that makes them look good. Because what do they say? Oh, the Postmate, the, you know, Postmates or the Instacart driver is wonderful, he'll sit with you, take out your trash. I don't have to do that, but that makes them look good.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbl for one last question, and then we'll go to open comment.
I just want to recognize, it's less of a question, more of a statement, that the social contract that you described, that is the expectation, the company is making a huge profit, is reasonable to expect that you're paid a living wage. And the comparison to a family and how a family operates, you know, as Councilmember O'Brien said, that has never, in the history of the relationship between the employer and the employee, ever magically worked by itself. And ultimately, it's our responsibility to work together, to create that accountability, and to make sure that that social compact is a reality. And so we are lucky that we've had folks in the community who have been raising this issue. There's been sort of a canary in the coal mine around the gig employee for a while now. We've reached out to some of the largest employers that use the gig economy and asked them to have a role in spurring a conversation about how to address these issues, especially as every single employment sector has some gig economy people in it now. It's moving more and more to that. But we can't rely on those folks to initiate those conversations. We have to do them here now. I appreciate understanding the role of technology. This is very similar to what we learned in the secure scheduling discussions about how an app called First in Time allowed employers to basically send people home with very short, very short notice because they're able to crunch the numbers really quickly and just get right down to the minute the number of people they need on the floor. And they save their costs by minimizing the number of hours that you're working. But that doesn't work for us, right? We hear you. We hear that the flexibility in this economy and with the needs that people have to care for their family means that you need this kind of work. But we cannot let employers have it both ways. If they're gonna treat you like employees, they're gonna hold you accountable, they're gonna allow other people to rate your performance, we need to have some way of monitoring that and regulating to make sure that our expectations as a community, as a community of people who are committed to making sure that this economy works for everyone can move forward. So I really, really, truly appreciate your words, your experiences. We need to understand how these apps work. We need to understand how they impact your lives. And that's the way that we're gonna make good public policy. So thank you.
Thank you very much for both of you for being here and for underscoring your commitment to addressing this. Before we turn it over to public comment, any last comments than any of the panelists didn't get a chance to say? Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, the flexibility is really important, but we have to be really careful that these companies are using flexibility to eliminate everything else. Flexibility does not compensate for poor pay. Poor pay eliminates flexibility. I mean, we have a brother, Adama, here who may be commenting, he works 70, 80 hours a week. There's not a lot of flexibility in that.
Right. Yeah, I use that word with full understanding how it is being often used and how the use of it by other employees is being used against our efforts to have fair worker standards.
I would like to just add that the Unemployment Security Department, that's been my question for the past two, three years, like, where are they in all of this? And when there's been times where I'm not making any money, and there's slow periods, drought season, if you will, I'm filing for unemployment. And what I have found is that the Unemployment Security Department has worked against me, charged me with fraud, and now I owe them. So I can't win for losing. So the Unemployment Security Department, basically, there's no need for it.
I'd like to just quickly add what you said, Councilwoman, is that obviously, these companies, like I said, I met with those executives, and they gave me the, you know, the full song and dance. And they said, oh, we're gonna help you guys, we're gonna change this. But obviously, self-regulation is not gonna work. Uber has done anything, Lyft, none of these companies are gonna, you know, do what's best for the worker, even though they say they are. So I really, I think you hit the nail on the head, that it's up to you guys who are voted in and to do legislation to protect us, you know? To have that honor, courage, and commitment that I learned in the Marine Corps, that you guys can also have that honor and courage and commitment when you face these companies to help us out and fight for us.
The same honor and commitment that we give to everybody when we're giving them rides to the city council, because I get a lot of rides here. And to the customers, when I'm providing their food and I'm making sure that it's packaged right, and people are getting their Starbucks in the morning, and everybody's happy, and it, you know, it goes around. It's not, I'm just not just the dumb delivery driver.
Thank you for saying that. And once again, our rally is this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. at the downtown Bellevue Park. Feel free to park over at the either mall, the Lincoln Square Mall or the Bellevue Square Mall. Come join us, please, because we could have a lot of people there.
So Mariah, Don, Rebecca, Mia, Aya, and Ulysses, thank you very much for being here today. Huge round of applause for your participation. You are welcome to go ahead and transition as we call up folks for public testimony. We're gonna do a minute and a half testimony for folks who need to prepare their comments. And before we do that, Councilmember Herbl.
I just also wanted to make mention for the viewing public that the council back in February passed a resolution directing the Office of Labor Standards to look at the issue, not the broad issue of the gig economy, but specifically worker misclassification. And we're actually expecting a report from the Office of Labor Standards with the help of the Labor Standards Advisory Committee later on this month for some recommendations on how to address the specific issue of workers who have misclassified. As we've heard, the issue is much broader than that, but I am looking forward to getting that work.
Great, great reminder. Thank you very much for your leadership on that as well. Thank you, Faridah, for putting up a minute and 30 seconds on the clock. As I'm dealing out thank yous, I want to thank Sigil Pareek, Chief of Staff, who's in the back, who organized this lunch and learn work session for her help in coordinating today's discussion. And before I call folks up, I'll call you up in groups of three. I also want to remind folks that this is the beginning of a conversation that we are really interested in having with folks from the industry, with other workers, other experiences being shared at the table. Given the timing today, and it's given, it's a work session, it's relatively short, we just want to acknowledge that there will be more to come. So if you weren't on today's panel, there will be more opportunities in the future and for industry as well to respond, as we are very interested in the accountability and transparency issues that were raised today. So with that, let's go ahead and hear from Jake Lindsay, Bob Guber, nope, Bob. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate you for recognizing I was struggling. And then Adam Dirkrey. Welcome. Thank you very much for being here, Jake.
Thank you. I'm also an Uber and Lyft driver, who for all four years that I've worked for them, I've also made under minimum wage, sometimes even before expenses. And as this panel shows us and the data shows, I'm one of tens of millions of gig economy workers being taken advantage of by these really unfair contracts. I just think it should be flatly illegal for these companies who are setting our wages to not pay us a minimum wage at the very least after expenses. Uber and Lyft are actually now even ranking us drivers based on like how many trips we give. And based on our rank, we might earn certain pretty meager rewards, like maybe a credit card that gives us cash back. But I think this is important because they're demonstrating that they are willing to dynamically like grant benefits to workers based on how much they earn for the company. So why not legislate them to rank us based on how many hours we drive, not how many trips we give? Because as we know, the trips don't always come. And instead of cash back on gas, why isn't it maybe a certain number of hours works grants a certain amount of sick pay, like we do for the other city legislation we have around sick pay? So I'd like to see legislators working to explore that kind of benefits structure to pass, like a minimum wage guarantee, like the way that New York has done, after expenses, minimum wage. Also, I just have to say, a lot of special interest groups will come up here and try to make this false choice between flexibility and workers' rights. And so just beware of like the Drive Forward group and the PR people that are gonna come up here and say, you can't have workers' rights without rigged schedule. And it's gonna be like the cab industry and unions are gonna ruin everything. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob, and then followed by Adam, and then Lynn Reed. Welcome, Bob. And thank you for saying your last name for the record as well.
Dolbranston.
Thank you. And just pull the microphone real close if you can.
Okay. Is that better? So I've been an Uber driver now for about six years now. And when I started it, we got a fair pay. The mileage rate was great, and the percent that they took from us was fair. Since I started, it's the rates have been going down more and more and more. The percent they take goes up more and more. Some of them are 50%, some are more. And I've had some rides that I get paid $2.80 for, some of the ones downtown, and $3.20. And that's not enough to pay for the gas it takes to go there. So another thing that I have to say about Uber is the background checks. Last year, at my background check, I was deactivated for three weeks. The reason? Checker determined I didn't have a driver's license. I took my driver's license and a letter from the Edmonds Police Department that I had a valid license to the Uber hub. They didn't believe me. They didn't believe the state of Washington, they didn't believe the Edmonds Police Department. It took them three weeks to get a word back from Checker that I was okay to drive. And another thing that...
Bob, could you wrap up for us just because of timing?
Yes.
Oh, the time ran out. Do you want to say one thing in conclusion?
One more thing. Yes, about the minors. They dispatch us to high schools to pick up minors. If something happens, there's no insurance. If something happens, when a minor's in the car, we're gonna be in deep trouble. Uber has no...
Thank you for flagging that.
That's why we need local regulations.
Thank you very much. Adam Dirkrey, Lynn Reed, and then Michael Wolf. Welcome, Adam.
Thank you. I am an Uber driver and Lyft driver. I just don't see how the things are going, how we're beginning and how it is now, it's a whole lot different. We work on long, long hours, and always you are on that minimum wage, without benefit, without hurting anything. So I really ask, if you can do a little better, we just want to live this life, have a bigger family, but try to work many longer hours, but just always on that minimum wage. That's the problem. I don't have much to say, Danny and other guys, I explained everything for the time limit. I'll stop right here for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing your story and for being here today. Lynn Reed, followed by Michael Wolf and Rachel Lutter. Hi, Lynn.
Good afternoon. Thank you for hearing us here today. Thank you to all the council members and participants. I'm part of Drive Forward, and one of my big concerns is that we represent over 2,200 drivers in Washington State, and we weren't asked to be at the table to be part of this. So I hear that you say that there will be more of these moving forward, and I really hope that you involve us because we have a big voice for the drivers in this area. It came, this was scheduled very quickly. It's very reminiscent to me and other drivers of what happened with CBO, that it was passed very quickly and put through very quickly. And we are hoping that there is monstrously more transparency than there was when that happened because we have opinions about this and want to be heard and don't want this railroaded through the system before anybody has a chance to react or, you know, be heard. I think there's a lot of miscommunication about wages and how much we make. The companies are pretty good at telling us how much we're going to make as far as per mile and per minute for the TNCs. Some of the other gig economies, not so much. I've chosen to remove myself from some of those, like Instacart and DoorDash, because they are not above board. So I'm glad you're looking into that and look forward to having a voice in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's hear from Michael Wolf, Rachel Lutter, and then Wolfgang Eastman.
Hi. Good afternoon, Chairman Sketa, members of the committee, and thank you to the panel for participating. It's always important to hear from people. My name, for the record, is Michael Wolf. I'm the Executive Director of Drive Forward. Thank you for allowing public testimony today. Of course, I was not thrilled on Friday when we first got the agenda for today's meeting to find that Drive Forward and our members have been excluded from this panel. I'm thankful that you said that there will be more inclusion later and look forward to talking to you about how we can participate in that. Also, out of respect for the ongoing negotiations between the mayor's office, companies, and other things, we decided not to bring out a lot of drivers today. Instead, I'm gonna offer you today what Drive Forward stands for in these issues. We support members' desire to remain independent and in control of their own businesses. We support minimum hourly guarantees above... We support minimum hourly guarantees, above minimum wage, plus expenses, plus extra for expenses, exclusive of tips. We support a driver's benefit fund, covering on-the-job injuries, work interruptions when our members can't work through no fault of their own. We support portable benefit systems for independent contractors so they can support funding for benefits like healthcare, sick pay and vacation pay. We support a driver-led association administering a driver deactivation review panel so there is due process for drivers who are wrongly deactivated. We support comprehensive reform for taxiing for higher regulations so they can compete on a level playing field with other ground transportation services. And as I said, I would ask in the future that we participate in a lot of these discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Thanks for reading that. And if you want to email that to us too, we'll take that list. That's very helpful. All right, Rachel, welcome, followed by Wolfgang Eastman and then Michelle Rodino.
Hi, I'm Rachel Lauter. I'm the Executive Director of Working Washington and the Fair Work Center. I just wanted to take the moment to thank you all for having this work session. You know, we've spent a lot of time talking about the future of work, but we don't spend a lot of time talking about the future of workers. And this is a real great opportunity to see what these kinds of jobs have been doing to working people in our community. We now organize what I believe to be the largest group of delivery base or delivery gig app workers in the country. We have a community of over 10,000 workers working on Instacart, DoorDash, Postmates. And we've been coming together and talking about, you know, what they really need. And it's centered around three main things. A fair wage, you know, at least 15, here 16, after expenses. Tips on top, making sure that tips intended for workers are not pocketed by the companies. And pay transparency, what you saw here, which is having an understanding of what you're getting paid and why you're getting paid that. So as our amazing worker leaders shared today, we are having actions this week. We look forward to having, you know, continued discussions with you and all the community about how to raise standards for this, for this part of the economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. And do feel free to send your list as well. We'd love to see that as well. Thank you, Councilmember O'Brien, for being here. So we have three more people to testify. Sorry, four. Wolfgang, Michelle Rodino, Marcus Courtney, and then Kimberly Wolf. Hi.
Hi. Hi, I'm Wolfgang Eastman. I'm a personal shopper for Instacart. I think, like a lot of things were already said, but I think we need to remember that when companies like Instacart specifically like exploit their workers, they're also exploiting the customers of those workers. And when you exploit the customers of the workers, you're also exploiting like just the city in general. So when, you know, there's this lack of transparency and this kind of like expectation that your tips, for example, are going to the driver or you're paying this much, so the driver must be making a certain amount or else like wouldn't make sense. So I, the other day, I read this story on the Instacart subreddit about this person who delivered and the person told him, hey, I'm not going to give you a tip because you make like $50 an hour already. So, and we don't make $50 an hour. There's just like really the lack of information to the people who use the service and people who have heard the service, I think, really helps in the favor of the company. So it's just really, I think the public really needs to know a lot more about what's actually happening and what's not. So I'm really happy we had this here. So, yeah, let's stop having all of our city's money going to these companies in San Francisco and actually pay into our own economy here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michelle, and then Marcus and Kimberly. Hi, Michelle.
Hi, I'm Michelle Rodino Colicchino. I'm a professor of media studies from Penn State. I actually used to live in Seattle, so it's nice to be back. But I've been interviewing drivers for the last three years in Seattle and Philadelphia, and I've interviewed 100 drivers approximately. And the thing, if I could sum something up, I mean, I think they really share a lot of the same problems and challenges and also hopes that I heard today. And speaking with the drivers specifically of Uber and Lyft, I would say that driving for Uber and Lyft is like the payday loan of jobs. A lot of the drivers I've spoke, I've spoken with, like a lot of the workers who have discussed their experiences today, look to driving because they need to make some money. Expenses, just living expenses are high. The social welfare system is not at all what it used to be and they need money quickly for their family. So it's a payday loan in that sense and that they're going to have to pay this off at some point. They often pay dearly, actually, with, with actual expenses that they end up later having to, to pay off or finance somehow. And they often pay with their health. So it's really your job to kind of underscore something that Lisa Herbl said earlier. It's really government's job to step in and make it possible for people to work in Seattle. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Marcus, Courtney, and then Kimberly Wolf. Marcus, good to see you again.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you, Member Councilwoman Mosqueta, for hosting this very important forum on alternative work. My name is Marcus Courtney. I've been a longtime worker advocate when it comes to the contingent work issue as somebody that was a former high-tech perma-temple at Microsoft that launched the first union for tech workers in the country. Just want to point out that the issue of gig work, as it was mentioned in earlier in the session, is part of the larger, broader trend in the US economy challenging the employer-employee relationship. According to the recent reports from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, it is, that came out in June of last year, they highlight maybe that the, the growth of the contingent economy maybe not, has not changed over the past number of years. But when you actually add up all the categories of those that are doing contingent work, from gig workers, on-call workers, contract workers, independent contractors, in the United States, more than 17 million people today in the economy are working as contingent workers. And those workers are less likely to have benefits, retirement security, as well as healthcare. And they're more likely to be women and minorities. So that's a very important issue. I just wanted to highlight that and elevate that as well. And economists such as Katzen Kruger have also noted that they're, from their research, they've seen the contingent economy growing from 1% to 2% over the past five years. And so I think this is going to be a very important and emerging issue, especially in Seattle, a town and a city where there's more programmers than there are cashiers that are working in the high-tech new economy. And that's where a lot of this work is getting done. And so I think this is a really important issue. So I applaud the city council for elevating the voices of workers and this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Marcus. Kimberly Wolf. Welcome, Kimberly. Yeah, just pull it on down. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. I was particularly glad to hear one of the councilmembers mention the fact that even though this is new technology, it's the same old stuff that these people are doing for decades, for centuries, you know? It's the same old thing. If we'd had something like this just before the Industrial Revolution, I wonder how much human misery and even death could have been pushed to the side or not, not happened. The fact that we get the 40-day, 40-hour work and, and labor laws to help you not get your hands caught in the machine and, you know, and all this kind of stuff. This is the modern day version of that pre-Industrial Revolution time. And we need to get ahead of this. So I applaud you for doing this right now. There is a lot of hidden expenses that we have. Just to mention one that I hadn't heard anybody mention, you know, IRS. When you figure your 50 cents per mile or whatever, that's figuring in wear and tear on your car. Well, what about the depreciation on my car? I got a loan on my car and within two years, I was underwater on that car because of the huge number of miles I put on it. My old car, I maybe popped, say, two tires in three or four years. With the new car, eight. It has been eight in four years. I don't know, 50 bucks a pop? Okay, so these are the kinds of expenses that we are incurring but are not getting any sort of help with. Something's got to give and I'm, I'm afraid if you guys don't do something strong, it's going to be us.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. That is all the folks that I had signed up for public testimony. Was there anybody else that wanted to testify that didn't get a chance to sign up? Well, I think that the words that Kimberly just left us with in recognition of yesterday being Labor Day and people applauding the work of the eight-hour day, the fact that we have a weekend, the honor, the words that we use to honor labor on Labor Day and trying to not just do that for past work and past work experiences, but to look at the changing nature of work is a call to action for all of us. And appreciate Councilmember Herbl, your leadership on this and for being here today and for all the folks who testified today and for your work in the past on this issue. There will be more conversations, as you heard. And so we look forward to working with you on that. There's going to be a number of things that I'll be looking at. Direction and control, class of worker legislation that New York has done, the rights of independent contractors, transparency, issues around accountability. Also, the role of the unemployment insurance system, workers' compensation, and access to bathrooms. That was a really important point. And then also protection for minors. That was something new that had been put on my radar. So much more to come as we look into this issue. Overall, we've been a city that has been historically looked at as a leader on worker standards, especially on minimum wage, secure scheduling, sick leave. This is an area that I am hoping that the city of Seattle will continue to lead on as we think about protecting, yes, in some cases, the flexibility, but more importantly, making sure that the labor standards that we have fought for apply to all sectors, including no matter how anybody, anybody is classified and where their work comes from, whether it's a directive from a boss or a directive from an app. We want those labor protections extended and protected. So with that, more conversations to come. And just for the good of the order, the next Housing, Health, Energy and Workers' Rights Committee will be on September 5th. That's this Thursday at 9:00 AM. And we hope folks tune in for that as well. Thank you all for participating today and for being here for public testimony. Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbl, for your leadership.